Good evening. Welcome to Wilson Sepulvede School District Board of Education meeting for the Monday, Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. As I usually mention at the meeting, at some point during our meeting, there will be a part for public comment. If you're here, you'll be able to participate in that. If you're not here, you can certainly give a call to the school, 751-9399, which is Mrs. Vaughn's direct number. And if you have common questions, concerns, you can get that to the board and to me. At this time, I'll turn the board meeting over. President Carroll.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
By the wings, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands foundation of freedom, individual, liberty, and justice.
Okay, item one B, approved meeting minutes stated November 14th, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two, special presentation. I'll turn this over to Superintendent Carter.
Thank you, President Carroll. Carolyn, just to board notes from previous workshops and papers and recent notes, Carolyn and I, Carolyn met with Bank on Buffalo, and then Carolyn and I met with MNT to sort of do a review of the tax process that the board requested for us to do. So in your possession, two write-ups. One from a meeting that Carolyn had with Bank on Buffalo, and one from a meeting that Carolyn and I had with MNT. And she's going to just briefly review that. And at the end, we'll talk about next steps and things like that. Carolyn, if you want to take it from there.
Sure, no problem. Thank you, Board Member. I'll start going over the meeting with MNT. I just want you to be aware that Josh Hein is here from MNT. We wanted to be here tonight. He is our direct contact for the district. I did also offer to anyone at Bank on Buffalo that I might look to come tonight, too. So as you know, the tax collection process, we had a few hip-ups this year, and we did meet with MNT to go over what happened and what, more importantly, what would happen for next year if we continued the service with them. So a few things that we discussed were, at the beginning of the year, I will definitely say that partially it was our fault. We did not get the data sheet to them in a timely fashion, and we certainly know that we have to do a better job of that for next year. And the people involved outside my team are aware of that, and we've already discussed that I will certainly keep a better eye on making sure that that form gets to them in a much more timely fashion. That way, they have time. We did not know they needed five days to test, so that way they can do their testing. We've both talked about the fact that, you know, that really has to be done at the end of August. So we all have our calendars, our timelines, knowing what we have to do next year. The one thing that holds us up a little bit, too, is the sample bills from the county. You know, those have to be absolutely correct, and I have to send them back several times usually to make sure that that data is correct. So the county was a little slow in that, too. I think they have some new personnel working for them this year in the tax department. So we discussed that at length, and we all know exactly what we need to do. It is a tight window. Everything is done between the middle of August and the end of August. So by the time you guys approve the tax form in August 12th, 13th, 14th, boom, we are going from that minute on. We turn it in, the bills are done, the data sheets are done, we're checking things, we're getting the bills out, all in two weeks. So it is a very tight window, but we certainly know what we need to do for next year. We also talked about, at that point, because the processing did start late, how come we couldn't get caught up? Why were those people in our community upset, wondering why they're checked in and cleared? And so MNT told us about some personnel issues that they had. They know that they need to hire more people, and they're actually doing that this year. They've already hired, and they're training in December, and that is going to be for their town collection. They also do a lot of town collection. So they will be rolling out those new people and the training process this January. So that was our good news. We're glad to hear that, that, you know, they did realize they needed more people and that we wouldn't have stayed so far behind all the way throughout till. We asked MNT, what could they do for us? We know that our community members really want to be able to pay their taxes here. So they came to the meeting with some solutions at no cost to the district. They will have a courier pick up the taxes every day from a lockbox here at the district if we continue with them for next year. This way, they will be delivered right to the Amherst Lockbox Processing Center and be able to be processed. At the meeting, we also talked about the software system that we use. We use ATC and they use ATC. So that's a great option for us because they actually look right into our system and look up the bill, see the amount, see that they're not paid, and they're actually keying them on their end and then sending them to us also. So they are actually physically processing them on their end, too. They do send out the file that's uploaded into our software so that we have record of everything that is being processed. But we do still have to do that process of uploading the file that anybody would have to do if we had a different vendor. The file question we had for them was about the receipts. We've noticed last year and then this year that the receipts were taking quite a long time to get out, and we found out that they do have an outside vendor that does those receipts, and they are supposed to get the receipts out within two days of when they send them the file. So they were having a meeting with them also because they were not happy with the service they were getting from that vendor and were looking at other vendors as a possibility for next year. They said that that will be resolved for September. So overall, it was a very productive meeting, and they certainly came to the meeting with solutions to the problems that we faced this year. So I also went down and met with Bank on Buffalo, Colleen, the branch manager, and then Annette, the Vice President of Treasury Management. I asked them to kind of go over the tax collection process to me if we were to go with them. So taxpayers would have two options. They would be able to mail their payments to the lockbox in New Jersey or come into the branch. If they come into the branch to pay their payment, it will be automatically deposited into the district's account, and the payment and the stuff would be scanned to the processing company they work with, Lighthouse. So they are actually scanning the payments to the processing center. File is created at the processing center of payments received and sent to the district tax collector daily. The processing center does not have access to our ATC software or use any software to review the bills. They create a file and send it to the tax collector to input. The payments collected at the branch would be part of the file received in the district the next day. At the branch, the taxpayer would be able to have their bill stamped, received or paid, I'm not sure which one, as their receipt. Taxpayers that mailed their payments into the lockbox would not get a receipt, their cancelled check would be their receipt. Bank on Buffalo did say our taxpayers could use the night deposit drop also during collection, and they would scan them the next day. One of the questions that we've always talked about is, what would it cost, right? Because that would be a new bank for us. So they said three to five million dollars on a deposit. We discussed a few accounts that the district currently has that might be an option, but if I move those accounts to, we have to be mindful of receiving fees at the other bank that we might be doing business with. We would also have, you know, they would have access to the tax payments until we moved them. We typically don't move the tax payments until right about now, we're actually in the process of moving them to pay bills and to do other things that we need to do. Bank on Buffalo also let me know that they would sweep the money out of the evening to earn some interest on the tax money sitting in the account that was born above what was required to be there, the three to five million. I tried to nail them down a little bit more. I know that's a big span. The only thing they could tell me for sure was, well, five million they got, Wayne, would not be any fees to the district for the collection. So I know that's a big scan, uh, scan of distance, but some of the interest could be used to positively offset the fee that we would incur if we did not have the full balance there for the opening to occur. So those are my two meetings that we had, and I'm assuming that you have some questions or want to discuss things further.
Well, Board Member, if you have any questions specific to what Carolyn mentioned with the two meetings, after questions, I'm going to make a recommendation that we table this and move it to the Finance Committee to meet with Carolyn and I to nail down some details, ask those final questions, and eventually make a recommendation to the Board which direction we want to move it. We still have time. We don't need to rush into this tax season, not till next September, but we, I think the three-member board and Carolyn, I think, dig into this a little bit more. My committee committees, if possible, ask questions, follow questions, and Bank on Buffalo and things like that, and MNT as we move through this process and decide which direction to go. But if you have general conversations about that, I want to let you know that we don't plan on any kind of action or decision tonight. It's more of a, let's continue gathering information so we make a right decision for the taxes.
I have two questions.
Sure.
My first one would be for MNT Bank, they have the ATC software, same as we have. What is the advantage of that?
The people that are processing the payments for us at MNT actually look into that system. They'll call up the bill number and say, oh, okay, Kathleen Stewart hasn't paid her bill yet. I know exactly how much it is, and let me look at her check. Yes, it's the right amount of money, so we will key this and add it to the file. It's just a check process, checking, you know, extra checking step that they would be looking at the same file that we are looking at.
Okay, thank you. My next question would be with MNT Bank also. Will we take a loss in any way if we choose not to go with them with this part? I'm not asking pretty much. I was just curious because of our other accounts.
Well, it would depend on what we do with, to come up with the three to five million. So if we, if we were to move, we have money in KeyBank and MNT Bank, so it would depend on what accounts we choose to move and, you know, what will happen with that. With MNT's funds that we have, we do have a great treasury investment that we do with them because they are very heavily into the government banking. They help us invest all the money that we can into treasury bills right now, which of course we're earning a nice chunk of change on those. So we do have that relationship. If I were to move some of that money, then I would lose the interest. One thing I didn't ask with Bank on Buffalo, but would definitely be a good follow-up question, is the investment opportunities with them. Thank you.
And for your first question, the ATC system, it's, if you may help, the tax collection process, be able to look into the ATC system. Specifically this year, when a customer calls up and says they have issues, they can look into the system, hope our tax collector, which is Smith, to move through that process to see what happened. And for your second question, there's fees everywhere in banking. Why do we have a location, the less fees are?
Thank you.
I just have a question about actual paying them. So if we stay with MNT, do I understand currently that people will be able to come here at the district to make their payments?
That's correct. We discussed which aspect of the lockbox. A lockbox would be positioned somewhere at district. I'm thinking probably by door Z, because there's a position, so it's secure. People put the payments in, and then they provide a courier to come by every day to pay up all of the checks, take them to the processing center in Amherst and make, and process those the next day.
So it would just be a lockbox option, it wouldn't be paying to anybody in person? Because I know that's made issues came up, people are upset they couldn't pay anybody in person, or they couldn't pay my local. So I think that's a great option if they could pay them here, you know, here, but the lockbox.
They still, yeah, they wouldn't get a stamp saying that we received it, or they still have to wait for receipt, which we have to wait now, but I think there's some people, like, they let you go in and see some stamp their thing, and so they, they feel, but there's pros and cons to all of this, so it's, but.
That's, that's why I have a new perspective.
Any other questions?
Have you done anything on the fees, Carolyn, as far as the fees compared to MNT, compared to Bank on Buffalo, in comparison? I know, and that's part one of my question. Part two is, we have money invested in KeyBank, and that suppose, in my mind, that does not support the tax system, correct? That's just interest-bearing accounts or whatever it is. And could that money be easily withdrawn out of there? And if Bank on Buffalo has the same or better rates, would it be more beneficial to the district to do that? Let me help with the question first. So it's never easy moving millions to debt, so let's, I mean, at least it, it's not like it's not like going in and asking them for, you know, cashier's check or anything like that. So there would be a process. I know Carolyn and I talked a little bit about trying to nail Bank on Buffalo down with the fees. They're not going to, they're not going to be nailed down. And I'm going to say more banks, most banks are not going to say, you're going to pay this much in fees because the more money you have, the less fees you pay. So they're saying, if we get to the five million, we won't have any fees. I don't believe we have any fees with MNT right now because of the amount of money we have in there. So there's, you know, if we get to the five million, there'd be no fees. So there, there isn't comparison. Right now, because of the amount of money we have at MNT, we don't pay a paper check or something, you know? So I think that's a, it's something that we, if we bring it to the Financial Committee, if we need more information on that, we can have a follow-up meeting with both groups or just do it through the, whatever the community is. But that certainly, in fact, the information is needed to make a decision, we'll get that for.
Okay. And, and, and I thought it was on the, the KeyBank account where you were saying they're interest-bearing. Could we just move them? We have one reserve at KeyBank, that that's our reserve, which I know you all know the balance in there. And everything else we do at KeyBank is mostly moving money there and writing checks. So if payroll's five hundred thousand, we move five hundred thousand and we write our check. If bills are a million five, we move a million five and we write our check, and then they clear, and that's how we kind of use. Our KeyBank is more of our actual check processing, whatever's needed every two weeks.
And that's payroll checks and operation checks, and that's where also you have to, you have to balance and do follow-up questions because if we pull money out of KeyBank to pay to the Bank on Buffalo, are they going to charge us fees for down to the check, the payrolls? There's a lot of balancing to do. We probably have the option of both banks, of doing your payroll through Bank on Buffalo or Bank on KeyBank. That's not as easy of a process. I'm sure there's a way to do it, but that's not an easy process. That's a lot of changing templates and things like that. I'm not saying it can't be done, but that's, that's a lot, that's a lot broader question than just moving three by bill to do the tax process, and that would be a much bigger undertaking. As far as the, we would have a lockbox at the school. That would be that one of our, one of your personnel would actually open that up and have to file that every day, correct? No, they would have a courier system take care of that. We wouldn't have it. We would, I would suggest we would have Key, we would be, probably, um, Sercuri, some kind of one of the companies that do that, courier come through and collect it, put it in a zip lock security bag, and that be transported to the Amherst Center, leaving money Wilson employees hands on. What's the difference between what Bank on Buffalo is offering you as far as, right now, we use ATC, and they have a different way of doing it? What would be, would be, there be any more complications for the district, or would it, how would that compare to ATC, what Bank on Buffalo is going to do?
I tried to get some further information on, like, exactly what kind of file that would be, and I asked Annette specifically some questions, trying to understand what the file looks like. My, my understanding, and I did send them, both of them, my write-ups for them to review to make sure I was being accurate. It's kind of like a spreadsheet, a chart spreadsheet with like the bill numbers and the payments and the amount, and somehow they, that format can be uploaded directly into ATC, but they're not looking at anything. It's just sort of like, Tim Propp paid X amount of dollars, okay, and the next person paid, and they kind of are making a file like that that can be uploaded. There's, they're not checking anything at the processing center in New Jersey.
Okay, at the processing center now with ATC, they look at each payment when it comes in?
Yeah.
Do they notify, who do they notify if there's something wrong?
The district.
The district? And Bank on Buffalo wouldn't do that, or would you have to take that off the spreadsheet they sent you?
The, the file, there, we could upload a file, and there could be errors, you know, the wrong amount, or this was already paid, could be in the file. So those would be all things we would have to correct once they got to the district. Now, at Bank on Buffalo, if the person comes in, of course, there will be a teller kind of looking at the, the check and the stuff, so that would be a check balance, too.
If I understand this process correctly, this is what you're understanding, the Bank on Buffalo process with the file could potentially be a lot more work for your office, correct? Is somebody going to have to check to make sure there's no errors, like, or would you get an notification, maybe I don't understand?
Yeah, there definitely wouldn't be that check process at, if somebody, if the payments went into the lockbox. There definitely is not going to be a secondary look to make sure that they're correct. It's going to be a file that's going to be dumped into us, and then we're going to have to figure out, like, why we're not balancing, things like that.
That's sort of it. On that, that look, are we paying an extra fee or something? Because nobody works for free. And to have somebody check our deposits or our payments every day or something like that, is that costing us money to have that done?
With MNT?
Yes.
No, it would be if they, because of the amount of money.
Because the amount of money they had, but.
There would be if they.
There was no way of telling how much that charge is putting, how much they're charging a fee for doing that because it's all incorporated into your money that we're receiving on interest and like that. But what I'm curious is, I'm trying to compare, I'll stay up as far as Bank on Buffalo, what they're doing and what MNT is doing, and sort of saying somewhere down the line, is that costing us a hair bit more to have somebody look at it on a daily basis where we would have somebody in our office look at it on a daily basis? And I know it's hidden in the fees, there's no way you can tell us, but that's my curiosity.
Well, there is an issue with MNT because of the amount of money we have, we don't pay any fees.
Right, but that's got to be hidden in there somewhere, too. There's got to, they, they don't work for free, that's what I'm trying to say. There's going to be fees involved in that.
There, there's a fee for the process. It's not an extra fee to look at the check and the amount. That's their process, that's what they do. So there are fees in there, but because, it, it all works off in an analysis statement, and based on the money, you get, you get basis points for that and things like that. So even like clearing a check off money, you know, stuff like that. So, yeah, they do have, there is a fee on our analysis statement, but it's not, there's not an extra fee for doing what they do, that's the process that they do.
Let me just ask a question. Does anybody have any general questions about the process and things like that? I mean, I anticipate you're going to have to drill down a bit and ask more questions, and that's really what I think is appropriate for the financing, maybe to be, and take a look at that. Are there any other general questions about the, the process, or the assistance from the other bank?
Yes, Superintendent Carter, you said one question. And I understand that in this vote debate, part of the reason why people in the community were so concerned with adding a credit card option to pay had to do with people who either wanted, you know, physical receipt apps and timed payment, or actually didn't want to pay by check and with our, and so I was just wondering how either of these options has sought to address tax, since it seemed like that was the biggest concern. I recognize that to my, or you think that people are paying the taxes that way, but I know that was a, a big, quite a contention with a few people.
The Bank on Buffalo process would provide an impersonal teller. They could walk into the bank and pay it, similar to the town and the village. They could also pay at Bank on Buffalo in the evening in the lockbox, mail it to New Jersey. With MNT, they're going to put it in a lockbox on the district process, on the district property, and provide the, the courtesy service back and forth, and then they'll also sell them the option of paying it, mailing it, and we're going to have any, you know, option also to pay right there, a D check. I do have one more question. If you're regarding paying by credit card, are both MNT and Bank on Buffalo offering that service? And I know there's a fee for it, if they pay a three percent fee or whatever it is to pay by credit card, are both banks offering that?
I'm trying to remember what Bank on Buffalo told me. For, for us, yeah, I guess we would still be able to because it's not the bank providing that service, it's the district providing that service through our software. So the ATC software uses municipal, other softwares use different programs. So I would say either way, we'd still be able to do that through our software.
I just want to make one more statement, then I'll shut my mouth for you. We are a member of this community, even though we're a school district, we are a member of this community. And as you can see, Wilson's struggling, struggling all around. We've been without a bank for how many years? I looked at my records, and I can remember when I paid my property taxes in cash, it remained one. And it was just something, and I, I think that we owe it to the community, and it has to be beneficial to the district, no matter what we do. But I think we owe the community to really research this because this is something that I think the community wants. It's not only helping the people, especially the older people that don't want to mail checks, that want receipts, everything else, but it also helps the community to keep But it also helps the community to keep another, or another business in our district. If we can't, we do it. I know the town of Wilson is changing over. I was talking to Doyle Phillips and, uh, they're changing over to Bank on Buffalo for the community. Maybe it's not beneficial for us to do it, maybe it's cost prohibitive. If that's the case, we can't do it. But I think we should take a definite deep look at this, just to help our community out.
I agree, uh, trustee Trump, and that's partly is why that Carolyn and I discussed, uh, earlier today, the best possible move moving forward instead of basically jump decisions to have a smaller group instead of spending, you know, workshop, and I go smaller group through the, ask the questions. And have us go back and forth with each bank. So we have all of that information. And then we may refine, both the final presentation or recommendation from that committee on how to move, how to move forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Any other questions? Okay, was it Jason from M and D?
Uh, Josh.
Josh from, from D. Thank you for showing up. In the back, his practice, he was going to show support and give this as well. But, um, thank you for showing up. Uh, do you have item B? Uh, board evaluation discussion?
Yes, I have the packet in front of you. I, it's entirely up to the board's discretion and, uh, president's discretion. But I would recommend, um, in order to get enough time for, um, this conversation, perhaps journey this to our next workshop, or even the beginning of the next board, board meeting. It'll give more members a generally bruised material since you didn't have that. And now running back to our next board meeting or conversation. I'm sure we all would love another, other conversation, but I don't think that that's, you know, fair to our students in front of this and things like that. So I do recommend the table of the second presentation until our December board meeting.
I think that's an excellent, you know. We really need to read this and go over it and provide more questions, so thank you. And thank you, Carolyn, uh, for all of your efforts regarding this bank situation. There's a lot of movable parts to say.
Okay, item three, A, accept the resignation of Chandler Piver as assistant track coach at November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item four, A, personnel, report personnel. A is extended A, A I S teachers. Now, Wilson Elementary School for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year effective December five, twenty twenty-three. As per the WTA agreement, Christina Boyd, Andy Hishaw, Frank Felicetti, Sarah Giacinta, substitute Aaron Starr, and Harrison Mary Campfield. And I have motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item B, uh, I guess we're going to have a presentation before, yeah?
Yep. We'll have our elementary principal, Jason Wookiee, introduce, uh, the next person for motion.
So good evening, everyone. Um, just want to talk a little bit about Roz before, uh, she's more approved. So when we put together the, the interview committee and that we've talked as a committee, um, obviously we were hoping to have, to begin with someone with, you know, experience and everything. But we also really focused on getting the right personality. We're building a great culture in our place right now, um, and getting the person that would fit in with that, um, was reported. Um, and after Roz's interview, she checked all the boxes for us. She has really great work experience, um, being at a main office in a mature school, a very high-stress situation. Went through the four or five things going on at once. Um, she's been an assistant manager, a store manager, um, and, uh, so, so we felt the experience so that she would, um, do well in that high-stress environment. Um, and just her personality, um, really shined through in, in the interview. So, um, we think that she'd be a great fit and we're excited for her to start next week. Um, you know, it's true, myself, Roz, and, um, Mrs. Stewart, I think we have a really good sounding team moving forward. Um, Mrs. Stewart knows that you tell her Roz doesn't know yet, but they all got a sick room for the next three, something here with me. Um, I tell that to Mrs. Stewart, so Roz, we're going to be really just smooth around, just so you know, because she's a student. So, uh, we're really excited to have her on Monday. And I also just do, um, a few hours about Roz, just got it thrown in. Sheriff Padron has been joining in, um, since the beginning of September, um, and she's been amazing. So just, thank you to Sheriff, but we're seeing today, you know, Monday. Thank you, everybody.
Item four, B, Rosalind Simpson is full time type, effective September four, twenty twenty-three. His job, group eleven, step one, with benefits for the current CSEA agreement. Any year state fingerprint, fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Welcome aboard. Item five, A, student teacher. Ira Milchris from Niagara University will be student teaching in high school. Christine Waters, social studies teacher, from January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through March seventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, his fingerprints have been cleared with the New York State Education Department. Can they have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item B, approved a professional development contract between Wilson Central School District and the U P team LLC, U P guys contract to provide professional development for the district for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item C, approved an agreement between Wilson Central School District and Samletz Garcia, classic translations, translator, perform translation services for the district effective September one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, at a rate of fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars to make a motion. So moved? Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item D, approved the establishment of the Janice Allen David C. Wilson Scholarship. Can I have a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Item policies? Item seven, conference request. Approved house, conference request for the November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three agenda made speed through age. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. And number eight, we have a conference report, report to be read.
On November eighth, I attended a three-hour virtual summit founded by the New York State Association of Educational Professional Professionals titled spreadsheet tips, tricks, and well-kept secrets. Topics covered applied both Microsoft style and Google sheet. The presenter shared her bag of tricks which she collected over thirty-plus years of teaching computer function of miscellaneous topics including keyboard shortcut, managing database lists, using worksheet links, working with formulas, quick tips, and extras that popped in her head during the presentation. We had hands-on instruction and we practiced in a sample spreadsheet while she was presenting. Thank you very much for allowing me to attend this virtual summit.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Item nine, fundraiser request. Item A, approve fundraiser request for the November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three agenda made speed through age. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion here. Uh, Mrs. Stewart, do we have anything from those?
They're still discussing dates. And I emailed people today and there was no response.
Dates?
For the breakfast, I'm sorry, for the legislative breakfast. It'll be the end of January, but I don't know which weekend.
Okay, thank you. Is there a report, nothing reported? Um, superintendent's report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, board members. Uh, thank you for staying with us who came this evening. And, and welcome, rise to the district. Hope everybody had just a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. I was relaxing, was relaxing, could be on my end. And, uh, we're going to be moving into the night area of the holiday season, Christmas, everything about it. Um, I mentioned the email, just going to point out that there was a water main parade in the district, uh, or not in the village on this early afternoon, late morning. Um, it caused the, the issues as it regard, uh, as it relates to, um, the amount of water pressure we were receiving. We've had some issues over the last three or four weeks of water pressure as they, um, have been popping up with smaller issues. But this was a pretty large fire project that burst on the Chesley Street and, uh, youngs. And, uh, I'm assuming they're still working on it because I haven't got it all clear. Um, while it didn't affect their ability to feed our children and it didn't really majorly affect the water, um, other than the pressure on the water, which made radio collar control, it's a part. So we had a bucket for grade system going for the last two hours at the high school and, and, uh, last three hours at the elementary school. Wasn't ideal, but, um, the only other option was to get the buses here and send their kids home. And by the time we got drivers here and the buses going, it was going to be closer to one o'clock this morning anyways. And the thought of, you know, what I kept thinking about is our parents are working and we're going to be sending the kids home when they're not there. Um, so I thought, you know, well, we toughed it through and we made it. Um, you know, obviously if there's no fix by morning, uh, we may, we may, we may leave a message for them. But I hope is, um, they'll have a fix. Were your sports began, um, it was supposed to be tonight? Was the, the practices started, the first games are supposed to be, uh, tonight, if you believe, I see all that. That came up, was spoken, Martin, I believe. Uh, we did sense, and there was a field trip that was going on this afternoon and they weren't coming back to build. And we sent them out, but the majority of our activities, um, programs were canceled. Um, you noticed, uh, hopefully you noticed on the two changes to the agenda. One, there's now a category of fundraiser requests. Um, you know, as we always do, when there's questions that come up, we go back to policies. And of course, there was a question about fundraisers that came up and you go back to policy. And one bolt, there's a little line and then there's seven points, we'll see through fundraisers. So that's why we're doing the fundraisers. Um, and then through that discover, discovery and discussion and looking at board agendas, I asked Mrs. Pavanda, send a message to our, uh, district council that kind of oversees our, uh, policies, things like that. And gave us all this, the things we're should be making sure that are for public view. So if you're on the public website and I log in, you'll notice there are some changes. Um, so basically the rule fund that they gave us, then everything would be executive session material, should not be public view. But everything else can be. So even like a fundraiser request and, and things like that. If you click down the box, you'll see the actual fundraiser request coming up. And any personally, at the majority of those thirteen things we have for the executive session, or we would not put on a public view. So there's a little bit of it there, so, so, you know, please take a moment and take a look at the, the, you know, take a look at the website and our public facing, uh, board docs. And it's definitely different, building where you guys log in and get to see everything behind the scenes. There'd still be stuff in our executive session, um, but there'll be a lot more for public view. And board members, that's everything I have for superintendent's report unless you have questions for me.
Questions? Um, I'd just like to say, welcome aboard, because Simpson, other Simpson on the board. That differentiate between the two. Um, you're working for a great district, outstanding boss. So we're looking forward to it in many years in being here, so. Um, special thanks to the custodial staff in Southside, they were hard at work today with, um, dealing with the low water pressure. So please do remark appreciation. And that's about all I have for now. Any other board members have anything like to bring up? Okay, now we move to the public comments section. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for the residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum will not be allowed. The board, um, will not, uh, respond to any specific questions. They should be referred to the superintendent's schools at another time. Please be respectful and limit your comments three minutes. And, um, they should be related to board agenda items. You're done, move on to, uh, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, second?